Regular regular city council meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM, September 7th. Allow come to order. What call?
Commissioner Rousey?
Here.
Commissioner Coivinen?
Here.
Commissioner Purpich?
Here.
Commissioner Mullis?
Here.
Mayor by Solomon?
Here. Approval of minutes, city council meeting, August 3rd. Approval of minutes, city council workshop, August 5th. Approval of minutes, city council workshop, August 12th. And approval of minutes, special city council meeting, August 19th. Does anybody have any questions or changes? If not, I'll call for a motion. Yes, John?
I have a, on the council special meeting at, on August 19th. Both me and Brian are marked absent, but later, I'm pretty sure I was here because I made a motion in the, in the minutes. So, I wasn't absent, I don't think. I missed that one meeting.
I don't think you were at that one, were you, Brian? Because I think we had, uh...
He's marked absent and I am, but I know that I was here.
Yeah, I think, I think we had four bodies there.
I missed that one.
Yep, I missed that one, and John showed up, you know, tardy. It behooves me.
It behooves me to come late.
Yeah, that's...
But yeah, if you just, I'd just like to keep a nice attendance record, you know? Well, carry over from school.
Well, at least you showed up.
Yeah, that's true, and I do read the minutes, so I got that.
Any further changes? If not, I'll call for motion. Have we approved the minutes with that change?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support. Support. Support by Coivinen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D, approval of tonight's agenda. We have anything to add or delete? If not, call for motion that we approve tonight's agenda as it stands.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinen, do we have a support?
Support.
Worked by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item E, appointments and presentations. We have some guests from the city of Virginia here to bring us up to speed on their new project. Gentlemen, if you want to come up and...
The chief puts the deputy chief on the mic right away, so he knows how to play the game, right? Uh-huh. Mayor, council, everybody else in attendance, appreciate the time tonight. I'm Chad Nicol, I'm the Deputy Chief, Virginia PD. I apologize in advance, because what we're going to talk to you about is probably going to make Chief Lindy a little bit jealous, so, and he's probably going to come begging you next week about what he would like as far as the facility. Um, but yes, as you've heard and seen in the paper, we are looking to get a brand-new public safety facility. You've ever seen the wonderful video footage of the basement where they currently are housed? That is a crumbling facility that is definitely something that needs to go goodbye sooner rather than later. Um, if you've ever come and walked through our PD, well, we've outgrown it a long time ago. Um, so the new public safety facility that we're looking to get would be housed on the, it'd basically be the Hunter Block between 10th Street and 8th Street, just as you come off on 2nd Avenue from 53. Um, again, we as a police department are taking the hit, because now we're going to have to actually live side-by-side with these folks, but that's okay, we'll deal with it. Um, more than anything, we're looking for a letter of support, because we're looking to get USDA funding, so that way we can continue with the project, and obviously with construction costs certainly. We are predicting that it's going to be a little bit more expensive than what initial estimates were. Um, again, we're, we're in the process of getting a construction manager and things like that, and as soon as we have that individual onboard, we'll have some definitive prices. But, uh, we just want to give you kind of a little bit of an idea of what we'd also be able to offer as far as your city is concerned. So we know that training costs are quite high, especially for the police departments and the fire departments. I know most of the training we send our officers to, you're heading down to Duluth or the Twin Cities, we're talking hotel stays and things like that. Well, most of that training, we're planning on doing now in-house, right in Virginia, just down the highway from you folks. So, we're talking all of our crisis intervention training, we're talking, we're going to have a state-of-the-art firearm simulator trainer in there, that's also going to have the de-escalation training in there. We now currently have our TASER training, which is incorporated with what we call a HULK suit. And what this is, is a suit that the actor wears, and the officers going through the training have TASER darts that now simply have Velcro on them, that if you go to use that, that's what you're shooting at them. So it also incorporates defensive tactics, along with all of a sudden our use of force, along with de-escalation techniques, piling on the things that we know are being mandated more and more by the state. We're trying to get a little bit of ahead of the game on these things, you know? We've been very fortunate with the money so far that the city's been willing to put into this training for us. The firearm simulator, that goes without saying, right? Um, firearm simulator that we're looking to put in is about a $70,000 firearm simulator. We're going to be able to take our projectors and our screens and move them throughout the facility, so that way as you enter into a different room, all of a sudden, boom, there's a different scenario there. You can also do it where it's a 360-degree scenario, where the officer's standing in the middle, and you can be attacked, or have somebody come up from any angle, if it's a real-life scenario. So, pretty neat state-of-the-art type training. Um, we also are going to have all of our defensive tactics training done in-house. We currently have two trainers. One of the problems we have is the Hibbing Community College used to house most of our training, as is the EBIT guys usually went over there. Well, the, the college kind of started pushing away from doing the in-house training, so it made it a little bit more difficult for us up here on the Iron Range to be able to get the training that we needed yearly. So we decided, to heck with it, we'll just take it upon ourselves to start doing more and more of this in-house. Um, we also plan on having a huge conference room, which I believe what, 70 individuals can be seated for any given training. So again, we're talking whether it be EVOC class time prior to going out and doing driving, which Hibbing PD is looking to get certified instructors for. So again, kind of piggybacking off each other. Also, whenever we do our TZD training, things like that, especially when new officers come in and they want to go out and do the toward-zero-death, uh, extra shifts, they can come over and do the training. We already have one of our officers that's certified to be an instructor in that. So, again, we're really trying to help push to save other area departments a little bit of money on that training budget that every year seems to go up and up. So, Chief, fire side?
All right. Thank you again, council, for giving us this opportunity. I, I don't want to go on too much on, on what we'll do for fire, but there will be some simulation capabilities, as much as Steve's talking about the PD side, um, with hose line advancement, the medical side, training that we, uh, will be able to offer will be great, but it's more of this regional approach to training. You know, right now, we work with the Quad Cities, and we do regional fire training every month, and EBIT has spent a participant nose for, for a number of years now, and we appreciate that. Our chiefs have a great working relationship, we meet on a monthly basis. Um, and not to go over too much what Chad said, but it really goes to working with the other departments, so when we have these fires, like we did recently downtown, and we need everybody, um, I think we had 53 firefighters from 11 departments on that, we had one out at, uh, the tactics the other day, that was a couple weeks ago now, pretty much the same thing, I think it was 13 departments on that one, and over 50 firefighters. So standardization of training and practices only comes about when you actually have training on. You can't just issue a piece of paper and say, "Well, this is our standard operating procedure." So some of those things, like those larger training rooms, and then working together. Um, all of the requests, as I understand it, is for support of the USDA funding, and it just certifies that it doesn't, I, I think that it doesn't adversely impact their facilities providing similar services. So, I'll just say, we, we appreciate our relationship with the EBIT ambulance department. They come and bail us out when we're on structured fires, and we come and, you know, help them out when there's a patient in EBIT that needs advanced life support care. I would note, in the past year, we've responded to EBIT 199s, sorry, ambulance, um, to treat patients who are in a, you know, a cardiac situation, or a, a situation where they needed a higher level of care, and we're happy to do that. So, I look forward to more trainings together, and, uh, I'd stand for any questions, if people want to drill down or, or ask specific... Please, please don't ask us too many financial questions, because Chad and I will just be like, I, I, we, we don't want to get ourselves in trouble, because if we, we start talking finance, it's, uh, yeah.
Chad, are you going to have it into our firing range?
I really wish. That was one of the first things I got asked, though, Chief. I, I, the, the air exchange system is so expensive, that was one of the big things, broke out about right away, but, uh, that's okay. Fortunately, we still have the range, just North Virginia, and the college has been willing to still cooperate with us on that front as well, but, trust me, I tried, I've tried really hard. Not give it up, but for now, maybe Donald Lowe will be asking for another letter of support to have that indoor range added on to the PD a few years from now.
Well, you definitely get my support on that one.
Oh, I agree, thank you. Especially when we can have retired officers come in and do their yearly certification, right?
There you go.
It just becomes really uncomfortable when the firefighters have to shoot the cops.
Yeah.
That's the whole story.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, or...
I know, uh, how well the two ambulance services work together, because they were at my house a number of times, you know? And I know that's a very good asset, and like I say, it's, uh, through the years, probably three, four times I've had our service, then it's cardiac issue, then I had your Virginia service assist, and they work extremely well together, I'll tell you. Very, very well-oiled machine.
Okay, we have, we share the same medical director, and that helps with same protocols, and then also, um, let's face it, a lot of our members actually started in EBIT, so we trained them well, so thank you.
I'd say about half. And the other half...
And the deep-skilling staff.
The other half are in Hibbing and, uh, bunching Duluth, and yeah, we crank a lot out of here, and I'm glad to see them go to Virginia, because it is an outstanding system. And you're right, though, we help each other tremendously, we cover your backside on fires. Uh, sometimes, you guys run out of ambulances too, and your ALS service, though, is wonderful, but I don't want the people at EBIT to think that, "Well, why don't we just have, you know, ALS here?" The state regulates where you can have ALS, and how much you can have, and you're damn close, and you get there really fast. So, but it is needed, and you go all over, not just EBIT, you go in many places, so I understand. I also understand that your quest for a new building is, is paramount, because you cannot exist in that facility much longer. You'll be hitting your trucks out the basement. Okay, so we understand that too. What, what, what I don't understand is, this letter of support, is it just to verify that we're not planning on building a new fire hall or training center, or that it would enter, it would bother us somehow? See, that's what I, I'm trying to get to, where, why do you need our support for that when it's Virginia business? You know what I mean?
Yes, here, a little bit, because I, I can speak with full confidence, I'll put that out front.
I do that all the time.
But I understand, USDA projects all require a certificate or a letter of support, no matter if it's a fire station, police station, public safety building, or a water treatment facility, or, or you name it. What they want to see is that they're building a facility that isn't going to compete with or adversely impact, um, another area service, okay? You have one, and now we're going to come and make a bigger one, and now we're going to be in competition. So, they don't want to create a, a competition, because these are federal dollars, they're federally subsidized, you know, at low-interest loans that are in help, that are helping pay off that balance. So, that's my understanding of it. So, explain it.
So, so you're saying that if we give you the, the support, what's to say that, um, if, if we do give you the support that you're looking for, who's to say that we don't come back and upgrade our facilities for our people, and the USDA says, "Well, no, you've got one in Virginia"?
We just have to make sure that we word your grant a little bit differently. No, we, we...
That's not, that's not what I was getting at, guys.
I, I agree, I agree. But it, it, it is a good point. And again, you know, we're, we're looking at now, this is our time that if we're going to do this, this is why we're trying. And again, that's why we're reaching out to other cities to say, "Hey, we are able to put out good trainings within a regional area, so that way you can do some cost savings as well." And we understand that, by all means, it could just be a few years down the road, I mean, we realize right now Chisholm is looking to build a PD. By all means, Chisholm isn't looking to build a training facility, much like ours is, theirs is more just to house the PD itself, but you're right, we would be at odds with them if they were looking to do some sort of training facility. So, you know, we also realize, as like the Virginia PD itself, you know, we have 25 officers, much like Chief Lindy, we're trying to fill a few voids there, but ideally 25 officers. So we realize that we're one of the bigger agencies that able to take some of our officers, take them off the streets for a period of time, and put them in those training roles. Unfortunately, smaller PDs just don't have that ability. Heck, not so many years ago, when we were down with 13 officers, we certainly did not have the ability to do that. So again, it's something that we're trying to offer up for other agencies as well.
How many, uh, other, uh, communities did you contact for the support? How wide is your circle?
That, that I don't know for sure, we can certainly find out from Brittany, and I know she had a whole list of pretty much every city...
In other words, you're pretty thorough, as true.
I've got one from Cook here, so...
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's the order of things.
And everybody that we touch, there'll be intercept, but I think about this, and I talked to a neighbor and fire chief today, who's also looking for a new, uh, fire station, and they're issuing a letter of support too, so that is not a concern for, for them at all, I've never heard of that being a concern. They just want to see that, you know, this just isn't Virginia doing something on their own, or just their idea, you know? They want to see support.
I'm all behind a, a brand-new training facility, don't get me wrong, and who wants to go to Duluth or the cities every time they got to get a four-hour class or an eight-hour class? You, you, that's not necessary. Just, uh, just got to make sure that everything is out in front and, and good.
Yeah, I don't think public safety and health should be a competitive business, you know what I mean? We don't want to duplicate, because we've got a big job in rural Minnesota. Like I say, I see, personally, I've seen the ambulance service form into one cohesive unit, and really benefits the customers. The EMTs, the paramedics, they work together so well, get the information when it has to go and take care of the patient. But, uh, it's the first we heard, I'd like to get a little input with our department heads, if, uh, you know, mine, our fire chief, our police chief, and deputy chief, you know, if they like to see something, have a little input. I don't know, what do you think, Chief? I know...
That'd be a great idea. I mean, on the consent agenda, we're sending, you know, Deputy Chief Neston to Camp Ripley for training. And right, most of our training is in the return tower, not in Simpale, to be serious, and so we do spend a considerable amount of money on hotels and gas, so we had something two miles away. It'd be great.
I'd like the shorter portage. I'd like the shorter.
And the Hibbing College is not offering a lot of our trainings, you know, everything here.
And there, there goes your competition factor, going away.
There's no help.
Yeah, so there's a need, and I know these guys don't want to hear it, but I'll say it anyway, we're not 10 years away from a new department building, too. Our building is, is just as old as yours, maybe not quite, but, uh, yeah, there's dust that comes from the floor if you're in the basement, so we understand, but these things are all on the horizon.
Do, uh, council want to talk, discuss this further, or meet with our department heads?
I think that, that would be an order, I mean...
We must have a workshop coming somewhere.
It'd be nice to have a little more input from our, from the people that are actually involved in, with the city of EBIT.
Everybody's outgrown these old buildings, there's no question.
Built the room to turn to such...
Well, they, they don't owe you anything.
They lasted 100 years, man.
Yeah.
You know, that's pretty long.
Because, you know, I'm, I'm all for improving public safety, 100%, because we owe it to the people who live here.
No guarantee, that's very important.
But, uh, do you want to get together with the, the staff, and the police chief, fire chief, and...
I think so.
Because I just want to make sure they're included in the decision-making process here? I don't want to sideline, because I am not the expert in those areas.
No, no.
For things in, uh...
I think we owe it to them just to clear this out and then make a decision on it.
Absolutely.
You know, because they are the people that are dealing with it, and we'll have a workshop with them, and we'll get their input, and we'll go from there.
You got time constraints on your letter? I mean, you know, you need it this year? Sorry.
There is something about the, great presentation, something about that.
It's really better, but, uh, Val, I mean, totally understand, we'll discuss it further.
Well, it's a lot, moves everything faster with you gentlemen here than reading it in the newspaper or a memo, you know what I mean?
And you guys know yourself that you have the people, you know, for yous, that if you don't give them an opportunity to say what they're saying, they're going to come up with their own things, and we know how that, how that goes, so if we put them at a table and hear what they say, poof, then we go.
And Chief Ferland, he won't come with any surprise, because we discussed this in our, in our monthly meetings for quite some time now, so he's...
Okay.
And Val, has any questions come out of that? You know, Val means, one of us, or Britt certainly, more than happy to answer questions.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if we have a meeting there, maybe spring one of you guys loose to come and...
By all means.
Fill in the questions, you know, that we don't have any answers to, and...
Absolutely.
So everybody's comfortable with that.
In that meantime, we certainly appreciate your time, and I...
Well, thank you very much, for like I say, reading the newspapers is one thing, but then when you guys fill in the gaps, that's more important.
Absolutely, it's always better, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. See you later. Do we need any action on that? Motion, but...
Uh, no.
Put on your agenda one of your workshops.
Yeah, that's it, uh, because I like the chief, deputy chief there, fire chief, for sure, ambulance director, things like that, you know what I mean? So I don't want to slight anybody, because that's not my area of expertise.
We don't want anybody saying, "That's the first I heard of him."
Yeah.
You know, that, that's always...
Be like, "That's the first I heard of him."
Yeah, that's the first I heard of him.
Yeah, I mean, then...
I hate that.
Item number two, commission and board application from James Barata. I see, uh, the, the planning commission is, uh, we've been low, low on that one for a long time, and it looks like that's the first choice, and we could really, really use some help there.
Mayor, I would move to appoint James Barata to the planning commission.
I would second that, I think he would be good to it.
Well, that's good, it's nice, nice to see some people taking interest, that...
You know, he's young, he lives in town, maybe he'll get on another one, too, so...
That's such an important commission, you know, the planning commission.
I enjoyed his application.
Yeah.
I did.
Motion made by Lillis, support by Coivinen, to appoint James Barata to the planning commission? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, another commission and board application from Barbara Judnick. Barbara put that, I think, as first choice, too, planning?
Yes.
That's, that would really take some of the pressure off that commission, to have two new members here.
Well, I will make a motion that we accept her, and I'll second it.
Motion made by Coivinen, support by Rousey, appoint Barbara Judnick to the planning commission, and I can't thank the folks enough for stepping up. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda.
Could we say anything out there quick about, we have a couple, we have two for the golf course commission, one for the joint cable television, and one for the joint rec board, so if you would be interested, just call City Hall, we can really use the help.
Because I, I thought we had that golf commission, uh, I thought we were full there.
No, no, no.
It would have been liked for a while.
We had, uh, John Reedy was on it, but he could not be, because he is the...
Manager.
Manager up there.
Oh, okay.
He was a voting member, and we didn't realize that right off the bat, well, now we do.
Okay.
So, and, you know, it's not that tough of a, a one to be on, but it's just, it's tough to get people on it.
You've had your moments, John.
We've had people on here that, and we've actually got a couple of them on here forever, and, you know, without their support, we'd have nothing, but it's, it's tough to get everybody together, but, uh, we're making it. You know, I, I don't know John, or Jerry, we've had a pretty good year out there this year, but, you know, we won't know anything till all the figures are done. And we'll keep us posted.
Perfect.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, by the way.
Keep us posted.
Yeah, right.
If nothing else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of item one, payroll, July 16th through the 31st. Approval of payroll, August 1st through the 15th. Approval of claims for August. Accept 2020 annual audit, and request for Deputy Chief Nest to attend CLO Command Academy January 31st to February 4th, Camp Ripley, Little Falls. Does anybody have any questions on any of the consent agenda items? If not, a call for a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no public hearings, no unfinished business, move on to new business. Item one, I don't think we need to take any action till we meet with our department heads, council, and, uh, invite somebody over from Virginia to kind of fill in the voids of some of the questions?
Do we want to table that, or do you want to just not...
Uh, if we just not actively schedule a meeting, maybe we'll have to schedule a workshop for that. Then we get ahold of, uh, ambulance, fire, and the chief and deputy chief, police department, because, you know, there's, there's a lot of questions, it's, it's a big deal, you know? Local training, things of that, of that order.
I think that, maybe with this new facility and this training, you may, we may actually pick up a few more EMTs and, and stuff, you know?
Might be beneficial to us as well as them.
But let, we'll let them, let the people that are actually the active over there, let us know and...
That's what I'd like to include them in the decision-making process, you know, that we just don't, you know, just avoid them or take them for granted.
They like a little input, everybody likes to have their little, their, their input.
Because like I say, that's not my area of expertise, so I'm kind of depending on the people who do that work.
Okay, item number two, resignation of Tony Anderson from the Joint Recreation Board. No one has any questions, like to...
Uh, yeah, did we ever get a resignation letter from him?
This is it.
But it says here, "I will be submitting my resignation to the city," is that it?
Right here, yeah.
Been receiving things from Craig, I've said, everything was doing.
Yeah, okay.
Hasn't been at the meetings, correct here?
Correct.
He what?
Hasn't been at the last few meetings.
No, I...
Ever since he sent a letter.
Right.
I make a motion that we accept his resignation.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Purpich, support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, proclamation, direct support, professional recognition week. And this comes from the DAC?
Yes.
You know, that, uh, that is such an asset to the city. Anything else we have to do other than...
No, she'd like to show up or to work with us on, in the date.
Okay.
Monday, September 13th, off all of the ground.
Because all we have to do is authorize the proclamation.
Yes, please.
Have a motion that we authorize this proclamation?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, have a support.
Support.
Worked by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carry. Like I say, it's a great, great service in town. They've been here a long time. And they've been just an asset to the community and area.
And another school building that got to, well, good use. Because that is an old school building, so...
That's one of the few things that that building was usable.
Yes.
Item number four, land services contract for logging of city property located on Station 44 Road and Highway 37. Is this any different from the other one? Alan?
Yes, it includes a little bit more mulching, you know?
Oh, okay.
Than the previous, but, uh, cost, uh... You're getting more for the money here in this contract, where the $5,000 cost to the city. But they will lease slash private here, and that's still the same as the previous contract, um, to the city to either burn or move following clearing this property.
And as soon as we approve this, when are they ready to go?
Soon as they can figure it in their schedule is what they're telling me. Current general things right now, and you tell them to hopefully get in there in July, but we're waiting on this agreement.
Oh, okay.
Soon as they can figure it out.
Anybody have any questions from Ellen on that?
No, I would so move that to you. Okay, just so they can get going. I drove down here today and there's a little bit of work to do, so.
Oh, yeah.
Get them going.
Motion made by Coivinin to approve this contract, do we have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number five, pay request number four from Breton Company in the amount of $343,484.08 for Garfield Street reconstruction. Have a motion that we pay this? Pay request?
So moved.
We had stereo.
Yeah.
Motion and support.
Pay attention here, guys, you know what I mean?
Why, you know, I didn't, I was waiting for John to say something. I didn't want to spend any money today.
Oh, I see how that goes.
I was looking at the color of your face to see if I should say...
Motion made by Coivinin, Jim, are you the second?
No, Brian.
Well, Brian? Support by Lillis. Ellen, how are you doing on that? Looks like they're getting ready for the paving, huh?
Yeah, there's, there's a little work, um, I think a block and a half left of sidewalks that remain. One hour's on the boards.
Oh, okay.
Attemptively weather dependent again this week, uh, hoping to get the bulk of that concrete done. After that, there's some turf establishment and, uh, the paving, the paving isn't scheduled yet, but they're starting to pack all the gates and what's being...
Well, I can hardly wait till it's done. The residents have been pretty patient with that project.
I've been fielding a lot of questions because I live right there. And people, they don't understand, "How come they're putting a sidewalks in first? Why don't they put the road in first?" I tell them, "Do you want five billion tons of cement truck going up and down your new tar?" And, you know? And then they get, they get it, but for those in the audience, sidewalks first. You know, like I said, answer that question about 10 times, so, now...
Starting to look pretty good at those stretches, the new sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be nice. Good job.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item six, pay request number one from 3D Concrete Construction, amount of $40,610.20 for 21 curb and sidewalk improvements. See, we did a few projects on West Evolith here.
Yeah.
Good.
Any idea when they're gonna finish fail?
Uh, they're just waiting. We have a little bit more, uh, money budgeted.
Have about $4,000, so they're waiting for us to pull out some more, so then they can get the load of cement, because if you just get a little at a time, it costs so much, but, you know, they're just waiting for us to get a little more done, and it'll be soon. Shouldn't be that long.
Well, the work looks, what has been done looks good now so far. I'll make a motion that we approve this payment.
Okay, motion made by Purpich, do you have a support?
I'll support it.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number seven, proposal from MSA for engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant, lead and phosphate requirement projects. Ellen, you got anything to add to that one, or?
So this is kind of an extra step, and, uh, the new limits are being proposed, uh, once the city receives draft permit. And it comes, there's so many days before they'll issue the final permit, and then the clock is ticking, so this is kind of trapping for that, getting started on some of those preliminary stuff, so we can start to see what thing they're gonna cost. That's what we're gonna get out of here, is some preliminary budget stuff, options, uh... Things that'll help, uh, help the city, I guess, find out how much can potentially be spent bringing this plant to compliance.
Because I know we had a lot of meetings in the, I thought it was time that we start the engineering, see, we needed those kind of answers in the numbers to move forward.
This is like the first bite out of the elephant.
Just a little background here, uh, every five years, we gotta plan for a new permit with, uh, NPCA. And in 17, the permit came due. I did the, did the permit, sent it in, and they've taken this long to decide what type of limits they're gonna put on our fossil mark. So, we have, uh, within five years, when they give us that draft permit now, within five years, we'll have to be making these limits. And when we discharge water, it goes out to Elbow Lake, and eventually through the San Luis County, or San Luis River, makes it down into Lake Superior. So everybody that puts out into Lake Superior are getting these limits. They might be a little different, you know, in the percentages, but everybody in this area is getting limits. So, now we send in our final letter, and hopefully they'll draft that. Once they draft it, then we have five years to make these standards, so... So every year, we'll be, we'll have to do something. We'll have to do some testing for a couple of years to figure out what we're gonna need, if it's just chemical, if it's, uh, new filters, which are due anyway, uh, that type of thing. So this is Tom, Tom Rick for Bonus, who already built the wastewater plant, so he's very familiar. So very confident he'd be our best that, uh, to start this project.
Is this, uh, report that I just picked up, this Department of Health Section of Digital Water Protection? Is that part of this?
No.
This is not part of what we're talking about?
This is wastewater.
Okay.
Wastewater.
We took a lot of time negotiating. We had a lot of meetings, what, even three years?
Yeah.
Been working up to this point because I just want to make sure that if we're gonna spend some money, we're actually addressing not a hypothetical problem, but a real concern looking forward, so we don't have a problem down the road.
This wastewater, um, that we're talking about, does that include, uh, United TacNite over here? Anything that comes from them? And they're pumping, they're pumping out, uh, the pit and everything, and where does that water go? Do we have any idea?
That probably ends up in the same area.
Yeah.
But we have no control, we have no control over that, that water at all?
Absolutely not.
No, it's a whole different matter there.
The only, the only wastewater that we get from them is from their
Sanitizer.
Shop.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure that all that water they've been pumping wasn't part of our system.
Well, I think you have to have permits.
That would probably actually clean it up.
Yeah.
You know, if they let us do that, they'd probably take care of the problem what they want.
I know we did that, um, years ago at Hemi, you know, with, uh, pumping out the hall rust, so...
I did ask about that, but that was, uh...
I heard, uh, I guess who's mentioned? That that was really beneficial in that area, with their pumping out of their hip tack to some of those streams and lakes, that really, uh, was a big help, cleaning them up.
Cleaned up Kelly Lake pretty good.
Yeah. No, I forget who told me that a couple of years ago. That was really a big help. It's all spring water, basically, you know, it's pure as it gets. Anybody else have any questions, Ellen or Jerry? Not, do we have a motion and a sec? Do you have a motion that we approve this proposal?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, do you have a support? Support. Support by Coivinin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Number eight, new ambulance change order, we have to do anything with this?
There is none.
There's none, okay.
Well, no, there's a change. There are changes.
There are changes, you can hardly see them.
No monitor.
I know, it's very small print. You don't have to. Can if you want, you go hard with the program, it's a preference.
I didn't see anything catastrophic in this. No, I mean, I didn't see any, you know, anything that was...
250 bucks, 150 bucks.
I just like all the zeros with no numbers in front of them.
There were no...
Is basically informational for us, Jackie, on this? Okay. Anybody in the council would probably treat this as informational, because these are minor costs. Item number nine, resolution, ratifying resolution, 2020-38, adopted by the City Council on December 15th, 2020, concerning general obligation improvement bonds. Jackie, what are we doing, just, uh...
You folks already passed this last year, but because of the timeline, we haven't planned on closing on the bond.
Oh, okay.
So the attorney, we call her Bond Counsel, okay, has asked for you guys to approve this resolution for record.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Rousey, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Number 10. Resolution authorizing the City of Evolith to make application to and accept funds from the Minnesota Department of Iron Range Resources and Rehabilitation, Countryside Apartments. Those are apartments in West Evolith?
They are, and I have been out there and been on a long tour, and you would be very pleasantly surprised, something with the renovation going on there. And they've got a couple of buildings where they're gonna apply for some extra, more demo dollars. And so that's why we would be the fiscal agent, and that's why we're gonna give you the resolution. But you can, um, just hurry up countryside apartments, West Evolith, and I'll show you photos of all the renovations they've made, and they're pretty state-of-the-art, stainless steel, with all frames.
I can't believe from appearance, exterior appearance, how good those things look compared to what they were.
The work they've done is really...
Well, there was one building in a back corner that I was all trouble eight years ago, seven years ago, doing their lawns and cutting the grass. And the people back then said that that building had to come down. There were snakes in it, and the people now that are doing it have rehabbed it pretty good. I drove by there a couple of days ago, and it looks nice up there.
Maybe you send me out to work, let me know when I can set up.
Are we holding out to some demo money there from the prior owners?
Yeah, from fire money.
Oh, fire money, okay.
I just, uh, refunded some of them, and I think I have some fire money, too.
I remember an apartment was first put in there, dating myself.
Boy, I guess, eh? I moved in there in 1979, when they first opened there, one of the first, uh, people out there. Didn't last long.
Early 80s, it was a good party spot.
That's, that's why it didn't last long.
That's what you remember?
That's what I remember. I'm surprised he remembers anything.
Well, let's, we'll limit it to this now.
Okay.
Have a motion authorizing this resolution?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, do you have a support? Where's the other resident, uh? Support. Support by Coivinin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number 11, approval of letter to the FAA regarding Phase II Airport Construction Project Disadvantage Business Enterprise Participation. I think the Virginia City Council, I think, has to do the same thing, don't they?
Yeah, they already approved it.
Oh, okay.
It's a formality since you're the owner of the City of Virginia Airport.
Call for a motion that we approve this letter to the FAA? So moved. Motion made by Coivinin, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item number four, approved city RV camper and boat parking lot project. So this is the one behind Douglas Avenue that we leased from the mining company?
Yes.
Okay. Is this, this gonna handle some of them giant RVs or campers we got back there?
Yes, Mr. Allen.
I would think they would, because they're back there anyway.
Yeah. Now we're just gonna be told where to put them.
Got some 20 by 60s Marko, if that'll, if that'll handle just about anything out there.
That's the trouble, you know, in town, small, limited space and things, it was nice to get that from the mining company, leased to us, so to take the pressure off the residents.
Is this set in stone?
Yeah, we let the people know, because there's a lot of people that have campers and they, and boats that are in their front yards. Well, now you have a place that you can bring them to, and I don't know if the spots are hard to rent, but you can put them there. You know, and get them off of your front yard and get them off of your streets.
Most of their houses were built, nobody even had a car those days.
And we still work in them, too.
Boats, trucks, campers.
I think we're out of utilizing that property down there currently, benefiting the people that, if they have any idea.
Anybody have any questions on the lot layout, or?
Was there, was there any kind of, uh, information as to what we plan to charge these people for? Is it a monthly or a?
It was yearly thing, wasn't it?
I didn't bring that file, but we did talk about that previously. I'll refresh your memories before we pull the trigger.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Also moved. Motion made by Coivinin, do we have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item, under item J, council presentation and committee reports. Anybody have anything to bring up?
Mayor, I guess, uh, Shared Services Committee would be, uh, a topic I'd like to bring up. Uh, recently received a letter from Fale Township. It's actually a copy of a letter sent to them from our chief Shikes. And I guess, uh, the way I read the letter, it appears to me that Fale Fire Department is no longer interested in the venture, the shared services venture that we've been working on for the last couple of years. Um, I don't know where the Town of Fale Board sits with this whole thing. So I guess I'm, I'm hoping to get a little input from the council on, you know, where our heads are at. You know, this apparently has to be addressed, um... I know Mr. Shikes arbitrarily canceled the next meeting, so, um, I guess I'm... Everything's kind of up in the air, a little bit of limbo. I guess maybe I would suggest, you know, my view, um... I still am in favor of, of this venture, you know? I knew there was gonna be a lot of pain along the way trying to get it to work. And I would still support the venture. Um, I would like to see where Town Board of, uh, Town of Fale is on this issue before we say that the issue is done with. And in the same breath, I guess we have to have, you know, some guidance from the council on, you know, where we plan to head, because Counselor Rousey and I, who have been actively participating in this, really need some direction on where the council would like to go with this.
I was surprised that I heard and found out that, oof, they just want to stop it, because you guys, guys have a lot of time and energy in it. And I, I'd like to know why all of a sudden they want to do it, and I'd like to hear from the Town Board myself. You know, is this what everybody wants? Or is it just what a few people want?
Yeah, and I, I guess, you know, you can take the letter for what it's worth. You can read between the lines, or you can read what's said. You know, there's probably a whole lot of, um, you know, I'll just say it, there's gotta be some political things going on here that probably involve people that have probably wanted to waylay this project from the very beginning. You know, and I know not the whole, the entire committee, and I know the Town Board, and I know the Evolith City Council. We entered into this in good faith with, you know, this being a good cause. We're all at a point where we're suffering, the fire service is suffering, uh, getting eligible firefighters to serve. You know, it only makes sense that we pair our services so that we can provide a high level of service to both communities. Um, so, you know, I still strongly support the venture. I just need to... And I, and I'm with you, Counselor, that, you know, I would like some answers from the Fale Town Board on where their minds are at.
Well, there's gotta be some specific reasons, and I think a lot of it's personalities, too.
No, I'd hate to think that, you know, one or two or a handful of people behind the scenes could derail, you know, such a significant venture. I'd really, really be disappointed if that was a fact. That's why, you know, the people that represent the Town of Fale need to be stepping up and, and, you know, giving us some consideration and some answers as to where their heads are at, because this is a worthwhile venture. It always has been. And we recognized from day one it was gonna take years, years to accomplish, and there would definitely, it was gonna be some pain along the way. And now they have it just out of the blue with no prior forewarning whatsoever to be just arbitrarily yanked by one person. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
Without any explanation.
I'm, uh, I'm building up for my dissertation now. And I'll try not to spit while I talk, okay? I don't have a problem with any decisions that Fale makes. It's their township, it's their fire department. If they don't feel that it's beneficial for them to consolidate or join services with us, that's fine. I would love to read the letter to the public and see if they get the same thing out of it that I do. That letter was totally unnecessary in its content. It was, in my opinion, it was derogatory towards the Evolith Fire Department and their training. And when I got out of the letter was that Fale's reason for leaving the consolidation is that we just can't fit, make up to their standards. That we would drag them down, that we're already dragging down their morale and their participation. It's in the letter, and if I'm wrong, call me on it. I've been married 41 years. I get called on a lot of stuff, okay? I think that was unnecessary. They didn't need to beat Evolith down. And I'm well aware that they're a well-trained department and everything like that. But to put the blame like that and then make all these there were this problem and that problem without getting into detail or who was the problem or what was the problem? It's all crap. It was unnecessary. It was slap in the face of our fire department. I'm glad, I'm glad you brought this up. There, I'm spitting. It was, it was unnecessary. It should never have been done that way. It was derogatory, and I'm upset. And I thought I handled that quite well for being as upset as I am. So, if they, I want to, I want to sit down with these people, and I want to get to the bottom of all these things that they had in that letter. What this happened, that happened, this is going on. Oh, you're bringing us down. Oh, we're people that want... Just, if you don't want to, just send a letter. We don't want to anymore. That would have been fine. Just, if you don't want to, just send a letter, we don't want to anymore, that would have been fine. But to slam us like that, and I don't care, if I gotta push back for the fire department, cause nobody from the fire department came to talk to me about this, I used to be a fireman. And I'm very proud of this town, and I don't like that. I don't like that, I thought it was derogatory. So now, I suppose now Fail people will be watching for me when I go around Edie Lake. But, that's who it is, I, I was elected up here to give you my opinion, and that's my opinion, I'll always stand up for Ebleth, behind them a hundred percent. I mean, nobody that good that they can't play with somebody else.
You know, the, the big losers are the people who get served by these departments and the jurisdiction. And, and you know, it's, it's a selfish motive, maybe these people, they don't like it, they should just quit. You know what I mean, it's.
Oh, and you know there's a few people that don't wanna work with the city of Ebleth, and without getting into politics and me mentioning names. You know, eh, that's where a lot of it comes from. But I, I would like to know, because like John said, and I wasn't even honest with you, when I read that letter, I thought it was bullshit. I mean, at least you could have done was come and talk to us, before you cut our fingers off. You know, so, I'd like to talk to the Fail Board, I'd like to talk to Mr. Shikes, I'd like to find out where this came from. And, and why, which I do have a very good.
Cause you're right, it did come out the blue.
It came out of the blue.
There was no inkling that they were, they wanted out or anything like that.
Well, we just, we had a meeting, and you guys gave a really good report about the whole thing, and I thought, okay, this is good. But I read the letter, and I was totally.
Left a bad taste in my mouth.
Well, there were some statements in there that are still stuck in my craw, I might need to Heimlich later.
Well, I guess we just would like to get an explanation.
Yes, so I'd like to, I'd like to get a meeting with these guys.
You want a meeting with the board?
I, I, um, yeah, we've long talked about having a joint meeting of Fail Township Board and Ebleth City Council. But for positive reasons, I guess we would, I would very much be in favor of meeting with Fail Town Board to discuss this issue more at length.
I agree a hundred percent.
Think you could arrange that, Jackie?
Yes, I can.
Perfect.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Councilor Rousey?
Yes, I have something else, EDA was wonderful meeting we had. I gotta change the subject, yeah, I gotta change the subject. Oh. No, I think, I believe that meeting went, was it EDA, it was EDA, I got mixed up. But it went pretty good, yes, yes, yes.
But everything's, uh, on, uh, going quite well there, I believe.
Counselor Lilis, do you have anything else to add, now that you got him all revved up?
Yeah, well.
It won't put me off myself.
Just a reminder, the public school is open, so watch for these young kids on their way to school and coming home from school. Taking away the chief's thunder maybe a little bit, but that's about all I have, Mayor.
Jim, you have anything?
No, I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Counselor Coivinon, have you anything to add?
I have nothing else to say, John got me going.
Yeah.
Again.
Again.
That's okay.
I'll tell you one thing, Thursday night, that football field was packed, there were so many cars parked around there, there was a lot of action. Lots of action, it was nice to see.
It was a lot of, a lot of good things came out of that first game, I mean, as far as the kids, the parents, I mean, it was like. It was, it was the start of something.
Yeah, a lot of excitement there, I'll tell you that. But I don't have, uh, anything else to bring up, Chief, you got anything? Jerry?
Uh, just to give you a little forewarning, uh.
What a truck, what?
We had a pump blow down at our wastewater plant last week, so we had the guys up here to hold it out and take a look at it, and they said the seals were blowing out of it, so that isn't anything major, but. That, uh, those seals are about five weeks old, and we have one more pump that's running down there, uh, for our filters. And that crapped the bed this weekend, and just, just went out, and, and that one is shot. Um, so we're trying to rush and trying to figure out what we're gonna do here, but I possibly, well, I'm gonna be coming to you sooner or later with, with, uh, some pump. Um, requests. Especially one.
Are they kinda cool, I was talking to, uh, Ed Haru about, we're talking West Ebleth, right?
No, that's a different situation.
Yeah, well, that's another one, that's what I was talking about.
This is at our wastewater plant, no, we've been, we've been working on, uh, on the lift station out in West Ebleth here, upgrading that just slowly. And things are going good there, we still have a few, few, uh, we have to put in a, uh, kind of a computer box. Everything else is running, Ed's done a fat, excellent job out there with, with some other people, and, uh. Uh, we got that thing running pretty good, we're just, we're gonna have to buy a, buy a computer box.
And that's fine, you know, this, this is something, I don't get mad when you bring it to us, it's just. It's bad luck, and we do have bad luck when it comes to a lot of these pumps, and a lot of these pumps are old. I mean, it's not, it's not your fault.
They run twenty-four all the time, most of these pumps, and, uh, they get worn out after a time.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it's just a part of doing business.
But just so you know, that will be coming to your plate, I may have to make the decision to, to get one right away, because we're old.
Any, any idea what the cost is on a pump check?
On one of those, it isn't gonna be as bad as our last pumps, but I, I would say under twenty thousand.
Just bypass, what the heck?
Let her go. We're already in trouble with the MPA.
The old days, the old days, let her go.
That's why you got that pond.
Just be able to walk across Elbow Lake on the re, on the reeds.
But I mean, one of those pumps could go, could be around ten thousand.
Well, don't lose any sleep at night, always, I mean, it's just a part, it happens. Anything else, any other good news, Jerry?
Uh, the transmission on the golf course truck went, uh.
You know what you're down to? What the chief has gotten a cage down there, that's what you're down to.
Right now, they're, they're driving it up a hill to back it into the garage, and, uh, the transmission's worth more than the vehicle, so we're probably gonna have to do something with this.
Well, we're probably, uh, at least a month out before the, some of our new units show up.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh. You know, looking at used ones, there's not a whole lot out there either, but, uh, we'll be talking about that in the workshop.
Starting to sound.
You know, you guys always laugh.
Inherited it.
These guys laughed at me when they were gonna sell, sell the big blue van to the door, the red van with the blue door, and I said, keep it. Guess what, it's still running around.
Yeah, I see it. Hey, Ellen, can you bring a little sunshine to this meeting now, here?
I'm not pronounced, but I have a brother, he's been gathering up, and hopefully, at the next, uh, meeting, we have more music or positive, I guess.
Okay. Steph, you got anything to add? Jackie?
I don't have anything to talk, everything else is to me.
Where the heck's Carl?
He, he just, he just booked, locked, two minutes out here.
Excuse me, uh, Jackie, are we meeting tomorrow or Thursday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Yeah, cause it said Wednesday, then it said nine, it said eight, yeah, there's a little bit, I figured it out.
Did you, did you, did you reconnect with Brian, Santa Cruz?
I think he was trying to call me, I had a missed call.
Yeah, he. The heading says September ninth, but then in the body it says.
He thought it was Thursday.
It's a, it's a conflicting.
That's right, I thought it was Thursday, then I asked you today, and it was tomorrow.
Well, the eighth, it's already on my calendar.
It's already, it's tomorrow.
Well, the agenda is for the eighth, so. As long as, as.
Brian, chief. I got a question for you.
Yeah, a couple of missed calls, a bitch, this is him.
I'll wait till he calls the meeting.
Two nine oh six eight three one, that's, I think that's him.
Anybody from the audience have anything? Before we call it a night? Meeting adjourned.